All right, call of duty to order denied August 17, 2021. Start with the approach of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving to 2.02, the approval of the agenda this evening.
I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Sandra, if you'll call the rule.
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Himarie?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And moving into 2.03, honoring excellence.
Good evening, everybody. We're gonna mix things up a little bit this month. I have another video premiere and we're excited about these. As last week, as you know, was our annual new teacher institute at Liberty High School. I think you and many were there. And it was our task, Cory Thomason and I, to find one story. We knew of the 80 new teachers, there would be 80 great stories. Our task was to identify one. And we think we found a pretty special story. This is a young lady that recently graduated from William Jewel College, had a magnificent career at Liberty North. So she is indeed coming home. And then what we also quickly found out was that she had a grandmother who served in Liberty Public Schools for nearly 40 years. So what we're calling tonight's video spotlight is simply this: All in the Family, The Story of Shay Anne Loretta. Rob, if you could roll that video.
She was my student.
I came to Liberty in fourth grade from Layton, and I've been going to Liberty ever since. I graduated from Liberty North. And then I pursued, kept pursuing my education to William Jewel. And I graduated this past May, 2021.
My grandma is Loretta Hughes. She has taught for 40-plus years, special education, all the way to sixth grade.
I came in '68, and I officially retired in 2007, so 39 years. But it didn't seem like 39 years. And that's beyond my imagination of my grandmother now having some of the experiences that I had with Liberty Public School District.
My grandma's had a huge impact. She has been right by my side since senior year of high school.
And when she came home and said, Grandma, I think it's going to be elementary end, I said, should I say that, dear?
She has been right there, helping me with lessons, helping me come up with different strategies to use in the classroom.
She would let me make suggestions, a little bit, especially on kids that were having hard times.
She has not left teaching. She's basically been able to live with, keep living with it through me.
And she'd say, Grandma, why didn't you tell me that sooner? And I said, well, honey, I felt like you needed to discover yourself because every day in the classroom is different.
She has given me just patience, taught me to be open-minded to different strategies. And sometimes kids just need something different. I love to be a helper. And it's like sometimes I just need to step back and have the students tell me what they need or show me what they need.
To be free to learn, to be able to be challenged, and all the time feeling accepted. And I think that is definitely one of Shay's gifts. And she has always enjoyed being with children. Kids always love to be with Ms. Shay.
I got the call from Bodnar. I was getting ready in the morning to go to student teaching, and then I rushed up the stairs and said, oh, Grandma.
And she said, Grandma, Grandpa, you're not gonna believe this. And I said, well, tell us, tell us.
She got with that. We just had a great moment. We embraced each other in a hug.
She said, I have a contract to teach at Liberty Schools. I know I was crying and she was crying and...
She had tears on her eyes. And she was so thankful. And so, yeah, it was a really special moment. I got to share with her.
I'm anxious, but we're hearing all about it in the future. And once in a while, she still takes my suggestions.
When I left Liberty North, I thought I was leaving Liberty. But senior year, when I got my student teaching in Liberty, it just really let me know, like, this is the place I want to be, and this is the place where I should be.
I believe that she's in the right place.
Always keep your hometown in mind. And it might honestly be the place that you end up in is the right place for you.
So I think we should give those two a round of applause. We actually saw Shay at Kelly Brook as part of our welcome back staff meeting this afternoon. And she told me she is off to a great start in just one of, again, the eighties that we could have focused on. But what an incredible story. And we look forward to sharing that with the community, I think, even later this evening. So with that, that concludes honoring excellence for this month.
Thank you, Dallas. Thanks to the team for putting those together as well. All right, moving into public comment. If you have some blue cards, if you have a blue card, you need to submit it. You can hand it to Sandra right up here at the front. We'll make sure you get an opportunity to speak. Just a couple of notes as we begin public comment. People addressing the board will be asked not to repeat what someone before has said. Persons addressing the board are asked to keep their remarks concise and to the point. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. And you'll note the time remaining will be up on the screen in front of you. Personally, persons may speak only once at the meeting. Concerns brought forward during public comment may be addressed by the superintendent or appropriate staff members, typically within a week. And persons are asked to be respectful towards others within their remarks. So with that said, I'll just go in the order that I have received the cards, starting with Sarah Barker.
Hello, everyone. We are all here to discuss what we feel is right for our children. I believe everyone should have a choice in the matter. I do not feel that healthy individuals, adults or children, need to wear a mask or take a vaccine. COVID is a virus, just like any other virus. In 2009, H1N1 virus or swine flu was also considered a pandemic and is still here today as a typical flu, according to the CDC. I do not recall wearing masks or the constant fear that we are currently, currently experiencing today. H1N1 has also had a vaccine, but it did not make the virus disappear. A vaccine mandate is not a one-size-fits-all solution. What would happen if a vaccine gets low or runs out and is not available for those who want or need it? Healthy people or those with natural immunity from COVID should not be forced to get a vaccine. I believe people should be accountable for themselves and their family and no one else. It would be absolutely absurd if I demanded someone take an injection from my benefit. My choice of medication or vaccination will not help your treatment work better. The vaccine makers are not held liable for adverse reactions or even death. Who will be accountable for any adverse reactions if it is approved and mandated? The CDC has been very inconsistent and misleading with their guidance. No masks, one mask, two masks. The vaccinated can remove their masks, but then become super-spreaders? We are only afraid because we have been told to be afraid. This is manipulation at its finest. Children are wearing masks and constantly afraid of killing Grandma. They are not able to see their teacher's faces to learn and have a normal day at school. If you are sick, stay home. If you need assistance, ask someone. Healthy children wearing a mask only delays their immune systems from working. The parents of Liberty Schools have been more impatient. COVID is not a death sentence. I've known children, a pregnant mother of twins, current cancer patient, who all recovered. My son had RSV at two months old during winter. He is fine. I was rushed to the ER at 16 with pneumonia because I saw breathing. This is simply another virus. Our city and state officials cannot stop a virus. It's just not possible. The CDC website gives case numbers, which does not mean they are positive cases, just a case number. You can also find positive cases as well as deaths, but I am not able to find recovery rates from COVID on their website. It is also hard to determine true numbers since they have pneumonia, influenza, and COVID bundled as PIC. The CDC also reports 423 pediatric deaths in the U.S. from 1/4 of 2020 to 8/7 of 2021. These numbers do not justify a vaccine mandate for children. It's time to stop blaming and guilting others for someone contracting a virus. We need to be responsible for ourselves. Before COVID, your doctor may have told you to let the virus run its course. Clay County, Missouri, is not currently under a mask mandate. Masks are optional in skating rinks, trampoline parks, and other places where children play together. I am asking that Liberty Public Schools make masks and vaccines optional. Choice and accountability.
Thank you, Ms. Barker.
Thank you.
Mr. Tom McFaul.
I am here to be the author of a cruciality on this. Anything, if all, this is so unique. We are, we are emotionally destroyed, or maybe, or killed. I don't believe all, whole America is destroyed. Our generation, many more, two, three, four generations, we've been completely destroyed. And I like saying I'm ready. You need to be, already are. You need to do amazing. You feel a lot to, to kill, I don't see this way, I don't kill. Well, then, I think, sorry, how do you speak? Well, I think, be right to. I'm sure, this, this, we're being right to. There's, there's more to the right than the lady. I want, the lady is here. Come on. I, I can see. We need to speak up, hit the job, we're bad, we're, we're human. We're stuck in, crazy, and I don't know. I don't know who they are, they are, they're me. They're, they're, they're me. They are, I don't know who they are, but we have something to tell. They're lying to us, they're lying, they're lying to the people. I have three years of sweet, different mornings. I'm not going to shut up all my life, but it is clear, no more. Have I lived again? You're in the house.
Thank you, Ms. Rickel. Stephanie Gordon.
I have an eight- and a nine-year-old that are in Liberty School District. And my daughter struggles with speech. And so I have been calling you guys, I know you all recognize my name, multiple times. I talk to Andy all the time about it. When my daughter can't see someone's face and how they're trying to enunciate words, she can't do better. It's so problematic. Since kindergarten, we have been working with her because she has ADHD. She doesn't speak clearly. She can't enunciate words. She comes home to me, and this is when I realized that the masks, well, aside from my own personal opinion that they don't work and they've been scientifically proven to not work for a virus. And this is an animal bipartisan, so it's not going anywhere. It's not like the measles. It can't con, I mean, you guys already know the facts to this. But I kept my opinions out of it as long as I possibly could for my kids, until my daughter comes home and says, Mama, my friends don't understand me. I'm like, no, they don't understand me. You're not learning to enunciate. Andy Wright has had my kids in counseling, has had my kids in speech, has had my kids in all of these resources that I didn't ask for. He thought that they needed help. And he put them in those resources that were available. And I'm so thankful. But then just to turn around and literally child abuse her because she, you're holding her back mentally, physically, socially, and academically, and that is abuse. If she can't see her teacher enunciating to her, apparently her teacher that she got half of last year was a great teacher. But my daughter came home crying every day that she was mean. And my daughter, because she has a disability, she has ADHD. She has some things going against her. And she can't tell behind this if someone's smiling at her saying, Lily, come on, girlfriend, you can do it. Or Lily, come on, girlfriend, you can do it. The mouth, the facial expressions, all of that plays into her psyche. I did not ever agree to co-parent with the school district or with the government. You're not my baby daddy. You're not going to tell me what will work for them health-wise. It is absolutely abusive to her specifically. My other child's on the spectrum of autism. And so this up here has been a constant balance. We've had to go into psychiatric, both of them see it. She gets medication from it. He has to work through it because his behavior is already testing the waters. And now he can't see the teacher's facial actions like, I told you to get over here. That's a cue for him. That's a social cue. That's a, okay, I got a full face. Look at it. I need to start behaving. Instead of this, get over here, Greg, get over here, Greg. He's not gonna listen to that. This is so deeper on a spiritual level, on a mental level, on an emotional level, and on a physical level, and more importantly, on an academic level. We paid you guys to make good decisions academically, and you are hindering the kids who have speech impediments. You're hindering them. Required them to wear filthy wet rags over their face all day? Give me a break. Even the dentists say that their oral health has declined over the past year. It's an insurance thing, and I get it. If your insurance doesn't cover us, you guys, the schools, because you're not masking the kids, then you can't, you're gonna be liable in some aspect. Well, the masks don't work, so it doesn't matter anyway. A hundred percent should be optional. Those who are afraid, homeschool, be afraid and mask your kids.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon.
Amen.
Kyle O'Brien.
I just want to say thank you to all of you guys. I hope you all had an amazing summer. I know we did. I stood here last year at this time, talking to you guys about sports. I don't know if you recognize me. I particularly recognize you, Kim. I remember you clearly, like you are right now, looking at us all in the eye and truly believing in what we're saying, taking it all in, and then doing something with it. My son was a swimmer last year as a junior, and he got to compete in everything that they allowed. I wasn't able to be there at, on all, on all, all needs, but that wasn't why I was speaking to you. It was to let those kids play sports. So this year, along with your, your wanting to thrive again, we have to figure out how to do that this year. And again, a way that encompasses all of our children. I'll tell you one thing, as far as when I came up here, I had two thought processes in my head. I could give it to you guys the way I really want to in my head because I am not for these. Or I could come here with love and compassion and have you guys look at me and understand that I know that there is more of a diverse population with these children than just what I want. So as much as I want to tell you, this is a black and white situation. It's not, and I am fully aware of that. Do I want the masks? Absolutely not. But do I know that it's gonna come full circle on me because it's gonna probably happen? I'm very well aware of that. And so I want to know how we keep these kids in school to educate them. I want to know how we can compromise. Because the health meetings that I attended, we were able to change quite a bit of the verbiage in that to take away segregation and take away individuals who may think differently. There will be others out there who want to put a mask on. I have asthma. I don't like to wear them. Guess what, though? I gotta get a paycheck. So we have situational masking where I work at, which means that when I'm at my desk, I don't have to wear it. When I'm up in the plant and have to go around other people, guess what, I've gotta wear it. But I put food on the table. I understand where you are in your position. And all I'm asking is that we teach our kids the value of our health. We teach our kids that they can be big kids and make good decisions. And they can make those decisions with all of those kids around them. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Mr. Bryant. Matt Semic.
Hello? I want to start by expressing appreciation for the decisions that the board has made to require masking at the start of school. I want to encourage the school board to continue to follow the advice of medical experts and continue to apply COVID mitigation measures as necessary. I'd also encourage the board to have the conviction to make these decisions because they are the right decisions to make, not necessarily borrowing the authority of Kansas City proper mask mandates. I would hope that we would have reached a point by now where the end of COVID would be in sight. But actions by some people of the community in the metro Kansas City area would seem to indicate otherwise. I would also encourage the board to proactively develop a plan, you seem to have a good, pretty good system in place as it is, for future discussions about this that eliminate these from becoming bullying sessions. Empirical evidence from other board meetings in the area have indicated that these have become hotspots for a vocal minority of community members that bully and shut down opposition through intimidation and numbers. I would argue that such behavior has no place in a public forum, and I would hope that the board would not tolerate such behavior. I don't have a lot of direct experience with it, but I also wanted to garden and appreciate what seems to be a very thoughtful approach on the part of the board to address diversity, equity, and inclusion within the district and hopefully within the curriculum. I'm glad to see that the board does not seem to be falling for the straw man argument that has been set up around this conversation, disavowing any effort in this department as a particular definition of critical race theory. If the board isn't aware, I just wanted to point out that a community group organized a pre-event meeting before the open forum that was discussed at the last board meeting, featuring one of the speakers that was invited by the Republican representative, specifically addressing, quote, "critical race theory and its use in the schools in Missouri," and to teach the group how to fight against it, unquote. Even by the admission of the representative that was read at the last board meeting, that open forum was a one-sided show put on by a focused community group and developed specifically for an audience of local school board administrators. Thank you for your work before I end. I would also encourage you to find where appropriate solutions that address some of the community problems around masking that don't put the greater community at risk. I have to believe that some issues that people have in the community with mitigation measures are real, but we don't need to put the community at risk to address them. And pure optional masking across the board is not a reasonable COVID mitigation strategy. But thank you for your work, for your sound decisions today. I hope you continue in your efforts to make our community an ever more informed and compassionate place to live, and I hope there's a great start to school. Thank you.
Mitch Semic? And Kevin Manning?
Good evening. My name is Kevin Manning. I'm the parent of two Liberty students. The justification behind mask mandates has become untethered, meaning semblance of reality, and has instead evolved into a cover-your-butt, ox-shaking mentality that will have lasting negative impacts for students. For our school age children, it's little to no risk of serious illness or death from COVID. Publicly available data from the CDC shows that this group makes up 60% of the U.S. population, only 0.016% of COVID-related deaths. National data also shows that among children, the death rate for COVID is tied to less than seasonal influenza. Two years ago, if anyone had come before the school board advocating for universal masking because of the flu, they would have been dismissed out of hand as irrational. Yet now with the virus, less dead with the children than the flu, we're contemplating masking all schoolchildren for the second straight year. That too is irrational. The data shows conclusively that a vast majority of children are not at all at risk for serious illness or death from COVID regardless of vaccination status. There's been extensive fear mongering about the Delta variant and has strained our hospital system to its limits. These sensational splains are nonsense and not worn out by local data. According to the CDC, the Delta variant has been the primary strain in Missouri and Kansas for the past two months. Over the last six weeks, aggregated hospital data shows that the Kansas City area, the amount of available hospital beds dropped only 1/10 of a percent. There has been and continues to be plenty of room in hospitals with significant medical issues. The medical data is interesting to talk about, but the question of mask mandate before the board tonight is not really a medical question, but a philosophical question about risk tolerance and unintended consequences. In this case, the unintended consequences of wearing masks outweigh the health benefits of students. Since the Clay County Health Forum and Liberty School Board are not considering mandatory remote learning, they're clearly comfortable with an increased risk of COVID transmission to students, since I'm sure everyone here would agree that locking children in their homes for the next nine months should lower that risk. Why is the school board comfortable with risking more sick kids? The answer is that you recognize the negative impacts of remote learning outweigh the COVID risk. Similarly, most parents here recognize the negative impact of masks outweigh the minute risk COVID poses to their children. Mandatory masking and related COVID regulations make it harder for children to learn and enjoy the learning environment in general. Students learning to read cannot see their teacher's face, which is essential when developing literacy skills. They can't enjoy normal interaction with their peers. I also thought that many teachers were careful not to spend more than 15 minutes a day near any one student to avoid being classified as a close contact if someone tested positive for COVID. When we had teachers scared of spending more than 15 minutes a day with a child, you may need extra help with a subject. Is that the learning environment the board wants to foster? Finally, and probably most frustratingly, there's no long-term problem that masking solves. COVID is not smallpox or COVID. It will not be eradicated in the near future if that happens. It's over one in a likely COVID will become endemic, similar to the flu and the common cold. I can guarantee you that next summer, we will be hearing claims that we need... that we need mask mandates for our third year based on some new pretense. If mask mandates are justified now based on the tiny risks to the student body, they will be justified next year and the next, and in perpetuity, because COVID is not going away. For all these reasons, I urge the board to reject mask mandates for that coming school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Let me introduce Section 3 Consent Agenda. Before we get in there, our Dr. Wilson's preliminary procedure of average rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to ensure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Do I have a motion?
I move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
What? 3.01 to 3.06? Unless I fill in the book.
Second. Sandra, when you're ready.
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving to Section 4, Reports from the Administration, starting with Innovation and Learning.
Yeah, the first item, 4.01, our Innovation and Learning Department. We'll turn it over to Dr. Moore and Dr. Westfall. Dr. Westfall's coming to the podium to share highlights from their report.
Good evening. On behalf of Innovation and Learning, just a couple of quick updates for you. First, an update from our Department of Student Services with the updated numbers on returning school registration verification. We now have 92% of our families engaged with us on the verification. And in addition to that, those families who have completed the verification process, we just wanted to thank all of our schools, because it has been kind of a heavy lift at this last minute, and they've focused their efforts on getting that completed for our families. We're almost to the end of that, we're very excited. Second, I am happy to just share again with you that our elementary science curriculum kicked off on Monday. Yesterday, with our new science inquiry model using enhanced and additional project lead the way modules to teach this coming year. Each school will follow a district inquiry model to dig into science education one week per month with a focus on integrated and hands-on approach that we hope brings a lot of excitement and engagement with our youngest learners. Our teachers will also be enhancing their learning of inquiry, of inquiry model through job-embedded professional development alongside our Innovation and Learning coaches and our building leaders. And one fact that I learned today in a PLTW research meeting that our very own Kami Met from Lewis and Clark Elementary is a national finalist PLTW teacher of the year. So I was very excited, and I just wanted to share that with you. Dr. Moore wanted me to share a quick update on back-to-school nights. So at the elementary level, the buildings will be offering the back-to-school night option for all kindergarten families and new. They will call the school for an appointment, and the teachers in then in grades 1 through 5 will create welcome back videos this year. So that's our plan. At the secondary level, buildings are hosting orientation dates where families can come throughout the day to get schedules and tour their home buildings. And then on Monday, we have web day for the 6th graders, and then our high school freshmen have their link transition day next week. And in addition, those teachers will have created welcome back videos for families, and then they'll post that to the family's pages. And finally, as you are aware, we kicked off our staff returning to work this past week with the new Teacher Innovation Institute, where we welcomed over 78 new teachers to our staff. Their three days were packed with sessions for, from educational law to trauma-informed care, just to name a few. We started the first day out at the kickoff with Dr. Tucker and Mr. Bartlett, so thank you for that. And ended it with great building sessions where our building principals and mentors were able to work with those teachers. I do want to take a second to shout out to our Innovation and Learning coaches for always delivering a quality new teacher experience for our new staff. And then following New Teacher Institute, we opened this week welcoming all of our staff back for a six-day pre-service schedule, which includes two days of district professional learning time, two days of building learning time, and then two days of teacher work time. Included, but certainly not limited to, those sessions were welcome back building sessions where they brought their staff in and just welcomed everyone back. We also had our Belonging with Dignity session, which was held today, and I'm sure Dr. Sehorn will cover that in her report. But then also visits to the schools with Dr. Tucker and company. So this coming Monday, we will actually host a full teacher workday to make sure that all staff have time to prepare for the first student day on Tuesday, August 11.
Any questions of Dr. Westfall or Dr. Moore while we have them?
Could you explain what the inquiry model is just a little bit?
Sure. So really, we're looking at investigation. So instead of a teacher one-size-fits-all delivering a single lesson to all students that they have no background knowledge, it really allows the students to learn how to design a project-based learning experience, where they get a seed of some kind of investigation or inquiry to grow, and then they take that in a different path depending on what their interests are and what we're looking for. So everybody doesn't have exactly the same thing, but the outcomes are similar, right? So we do know where we're going with our experience, but we want to make sure the kids have an opportunity to learn how to direct their work.
And that was once a month?
So we're just doing the modules once a month. And then that's the foundation, right? So minimum expectation is the once a month. And it's, we're doing it what we're calling prime time, so integrating it during ELA time. So making sure that we're actually using a real-world application to our learning, integrating ELA, integrating math, making sure our special education services are all part of a real-world application to learning. So it's a different, it's a different trial. This is our first year to do it, so to speak. But we're very, we're very excited and very, we're all in the learning pit, you know what I mean? Like, we're just getting in there and figuring it out together. And our teachers have been really, they've been very welcoming to, cautious, right? Because we've not done it before, but certainly welcoming to their, they have an open mindset, which I appreciate.
And is that just the elementary level?
It just is K-Pop.
Okay.
K-Pop. And we bought modules, PLTW modules, as kind of the seeds for that, right? So there are six of them, six or seven of them per grade level now. So we put one in each month. Just really big innovation.
Thank you.
Other questions for Innovation and Learning? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Westfall. Next up then is 4.02. We'll ask Dr. Dixon Sehorn to come up and provide us with our equity report.
Good evening to the Board of Directors. Dr. Westfall has already so graciously set the stage for what I'm going to share very briefly with you this evening. And that is that today was a pivotal moment for us here in LPS, in that we launched our partnership with the Core Collaborative by way of a virtual kickoff. John Crown Apple, co-author of Belonging Through Cultural Dignity, was our facilitator for the two virtual convenings. And what was so unique about this professional learning opportunity for us today is that we had every department represented in terms of participating in those virtual convenings today. So operations, human resources, the business office, the Innovation and Learning Department, so by way of every school building. And so, we implemented this in the form of what we call virtual watch parties. And so, it was just really neat to see, for example, all of the nurses convened together on the fourth floor, and literally, not only just engaging in the professional learning opportunity, but then taking that an extra step to have a debrief session afterwards. So as you know, you're familiar with John Crown Apple, again, co-author of Belonging Through Cultural Dignity, so as the facilitator. He really just kind of set the foundation for us in terms of connecting the belongingness work to the work they were already doing with our equity strategic plan, as well as our LPS graduate profile. We're very thankful that Dr. Tucker kind of, you know, was, he set it off in that he addressed all of LPS staff and helped them to understand that this work is all interconnected. And ultimately, we want to create a sense of belonging for every staff member, student, and family. And I just want to give a brief definition of what we mean when we say belonging. That is the extent to which people feel, whether they're staff member, students, and families, personally appreciated, validated, accepted, and treated fairly within an environment, and in this case, within the larger LPS community. So that has ensued as of today, and it will continue by way of, as I've mentioned in the report, we'll have some touchpoints at the board governance level, as well as with cabinet, DLT for this first semester, and then we have some other sessions planned for second semester with our school leaders, particularly at the secondary level. So that is my report for this evening, and I'm going to take any questions at this time.
I have already received an email from a staff member explaining, or just commenting that it was really quite a good piece of professional development, and they were very glad that it is being done in the district. So I thought I'd share that with you.
Thank you so much. And even this afternoon, as we, we've been cabinet, we're at a couple of school sites for the back-to-school meetings that have been held. There were a number of staff members and school leaders that commented on how powerful and impactful the conversations were. Somehow, Mr. Crown Apple managed to allow for virtual breakout sessions for those of us that were in the virtual space, but then there were others as they were gathered together in person. He allowed opportunities for deeper dialogue around belongingness. And so, that made it very impactful, very meaningful for each one, I believe personally, and I think will help set the tone for our work that we'll be doing moving forward. So thank you for that feedback.
At what point?
Go ahead.
At what point will the teaching, the teaching staff become involved? Will they have any direct interaction with this Core Collaborative?
So as I mentioned, we're going to start with district leadership. It's very important to start at the top of the organization. And then as we transition into second semester, particularly at the secondary level, that is where our school leaders will be able to involve some of their teacher leadership members in this work. And so, we'll begin to expand from there. But mainly, this first year is about district leadership and school leadership, and really, the upper level of teacher leadership.
Okay. Thank you.
To add to that, some of that connection is already being made as schools have their equity goals in place. As Dr. Dixon Sehorn has shared, she's been working over the course of this last year and through the summer with each of our leaders, and both on the academic side and then also on the operations side, for two to three areas that they've identified as their priorities. So I think it dovetails, in the end, it all comes together. To add to her report, I sat through both sessions this morning and listened very intently on the first one, was taking some notes. And then the second one, I was able to multitask a little bit, I admit that. But what I found myself doing as they were walking through the presentation, as Mr. Crown Apple was walking through the presentation, it was an echo, so to speak, of the work that we did as a board as we did that book study over the course of last year, even during the pandemic. And so, there were items, whether it was a slide or a turn and talk prompt where you visit with a neighbor, in which, yeah, we did that, we did that, we did that, we covered that off. And so, it's just that affirmation, and his ability to deliver and engage in a virtual environment, that's difficult to do. Professional development is only as good as a facilitator. In this instance, I thought he did a great job, particularly in a virtual environment, which is difficult to pull off. So I hope we'll get additional feedback as we survey our principals and our directors.
Traditionally, when we think of professional learning, we kind of relegate that to the teaching and learning space. But we're also talking about from bus drivers who were able to participate today, administrative assistants, team members within our various departments, as well as our certified staff. So it's bigger than just teachers, but definitely involves teachers because many of them are that close point of contact with our students and families in creating that sense of belonging. So it's wide and it's deep learning, and that's a process that takes time.
Great.
Anything else for Dr. Dixon Sehorn? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next then is 4.03, which is our finance report, and we will welcome Mrs. Cindy Sullivan to the podium. As she's coming this time of year, typically, we look at tax rates and setting that information is just a reminder. I hope I'm not stealing your thunder.
Yeah.
Okay. Just as a reminder, given some reclassification and things that have gone on legislatively at the state level, we're going to be doing that and taking a look at that in the month of September.
That is correct.
So we'll turn it over to our finance report.
Thank you, and good evening. It's my pleasure to recognize a donation, a monetary donation of $2,500, donated by Brody and Amy Pershan. And these funds are to be used, were used, to purchase earbuds for students in need for the back-to-school event that is going to be held tomorrow at Liberty North. So we really appreciate they are reading the need that we have there, and thank them for their very generous do. Glad to recognize that. As Dr. Tucker stated, next month, we will have our tax rate hearing. I have not received final numbers from the county yet, still waiting on that. This is a month later than you're used to. We would have usually had that at this meeting. Since we became a charter county, we now have moved that process back to September. So we will have more for you on that in a month. I also wanted to point out in the finance section of my report, nine of your, the ASBR is posted for you. The ASBR starts the season of reporting for the prior year that are due to DECE. The ASBR is an annual secretary of the board report, and it basically is the financial statements that are sliced and diced many ways for the district report on Slide 21. That was presented out there for you tonight. I will note that that will change, because there are several other reports that follow it, that we do need to reallocate funds in different codes. Bottom line will not change, just placement of dollars. So at the point that we do reach the actual final of that report, we will bring that to you again, and I'll let you know when that happens. But that will usually be around September or October, before all of the financial reporting is done to this stage. So I wanted to point that out to you. This is also the time of the year that we are for Prime 14 Liberty meetings. I know Dr. Vogel will probably report about that. I'm probably stealing his thunder. But we start meeting with them at the end of the month, and so, we are working hard to get data and information so that they are able to make decisions that are in the interest of the district. So we have been working hard on that. AFC Finance Committee has nothing to report to you tonight of interest to them. They do meet with the auditor next month at their first meeting in September. So that is always a good time for them to hear what the auditor is going to be looking at, and if they have anything that they're interested in having the auditor look at. So we report to them doing that. And that's all I wanted to point out for you tonight, unless you have other questions for me.
Any questions for Mrs. Sullivan? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report. 4.05 then this evening is, actually, 4.04, excuse me, Operations, Mr. Steve Anderson.
Thank you. Just a quick update and overview tonight. First of all, you'll notice all of the annual reports for the various operations departments have been uploaded. Appreciate all the work of the directors and their team to kind of assemble that information. And I really wanted to extend thanks to the course here in the middle. Hopefully, it looks like they will extend into the first or second week of September, running into some delays, the training and so forth. We, of course, communicated that to those building, so they make the plan around that. So we master planning, very quick update on that. And we've talked over the past couple of months as we kind of hit that September timeframe. That's when some of the, we'll pick up, some surveys will be sent out. We'll begin meeting, have a reunion meeting, probably late September and October. Bringing to the board in October as well, we can start to discuss planning criteria, which you can remember really kind of forms up the basis to the plan. Right now, that's on track to wrap up, as things are planning out, end of December of this year. So really, the fall will be when it really picks up and runs. And the last return to learn, the, right now, with Clay County Public Health update that was wrapped up here just this week, we have been working as a team diligently, kind of pulling together our operations, operation guidelines and protocols. All that information is being fine-tuned. We expect it to release either tomorrow or first thing Thursday. And that, again, will inform, provide more details for everything from how the tax year will run and how contract facturation will work for the district this year. Would that have been a good question?
I would just like to say again, reading that, at least the first page, because I didn't, you know, I didn't delve too far in. But those first pages are very interesting insofar as they give such a good indication of what that department does in pros. So I can read it, I get it, it makes sense to me, so that when I So I can read it, I get it, it makes sense to me, so that when I go further, that further information also makes more sense now that I have a better understanding all the way around. And they're, all their styles of writing are entertaining. So they just need to know that they're fun to read.
Steve, I know we're beginning to, some are going to place contingency plans for, lack of a better term, employment issues, so I know we've got the Minsky's that's coming in to help alleviate some of the nutrition services issues. I see we've got some on hold transportation potentially if we need it on, off, off chance. Concerns continue, I assume, or we're not filling at the rate we'd want to? Is that a correct assessment?
I think that's, that's fair. I will say it's the topic we discuss amongst the team, and just how to make sure that we're prepared and do that, that things in the team, taking turns what our, what our options are. Another good example that is, we're in active conversation with bringing in some H-Back support up in the next several weeks, maybe month, just because the demand is so high. And so that's something that we'll have to, plenty of folks on the other side to help us. But there's a broader issue, and we'll keep with H-Back on our project to take a look at some of the breaks in pay for several operational positions. My guess is that will be over the next month or two months. If Dr. Vogelar can speak to that when he's ready.
Good. Well, thank you to the team also for figuring out ways to address the issue, not just let it sit, so appreciate that.
Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? Thank you. Now on to 4.05, and our human resources report from Dr. Vogelar.
Thank you very much. This is a very exciting time of the year. A lot of work goes into renting our classrooms and the work that building principals and assistant principals do to shore up the gaps in staffing that paid off. As Dr. Westfall mentioned, we had a very wonderful launch to the new teacher innovation institute, and included in the report, just some of the, the data around the new teachers specifically, especially data pieces that we're very proud of. Fourteen of our student teachers have stayed with us. Eleven of our graduates, you meant the story of Shay, which Shay, by the way, until today, the only other person that refers to me as Vogelar is my high school track code. But I like it. But eleven students who graduated from Liberty Public Schools have chosen to come back and launch their career with us. And I think that speaks to what I've talked about for the last several years in terms of the teacher pipeline and investing in our own, growing your own, the initiatives that, that we have in place to try and do that. And then Shay's story specifically speaks to one aspect that, that we're really starting to tap in, and that's taking our current teachers or former teachers and ambassadoring this profession to young people. We do a really good job getting science, technology, engineering, math ambassador to students' careers in those fields. We don't do as good a job ambassadoring our profession. And so when I had the opportunity to see the video and watch Loretta just gleaming with pride that her granddaughter chose her profession, I see that there is just a tremendous desire for our generations of teachers to want to pass on that vision to the next generation. And kids win when we do that. So that's an important part of the update. Included also as part of the update with regard to the premium differential, the status, we watched that through September 1, when the deadline hits for that. Ninety-nine, a little more than ninety-nine percent currently are receiving that differential, and, and that's the work of Rebecca Fisher, who really puts a personal touch, reaching out to those employees to make sure that everyone that wants to participate in our wellness plan gets the premium differential if they want it. We are at about seventy, seventy-six percent right now, which sounds low, but this time last year it was seventy-two percent. So as I talked to Rebecca, she says we're really right on pace, and a lot of the finishing touches on that occurs in the last few weeks. So she feels very confident that we'll get, again, that level of everyone that wants to participate engaged in the premium differential qualifying for that. The final thing I want to draw to the, the report is with regard to the Network for Educator Effectiveness. Every year, Dr. Moore and her team, they pour into that, make updates and revisions to the manual. Every building does a deep dive into what their building look for is going to be for the year. The district as a whole evaluates its look fours. Last year, as you know, six point two and seven point four were the district-wide indicators. Those are just numbers to most people, but six point two is that we want to see teachers' communications with students be sensitive to cultural, gender, intellectual, and physical differences. That's what six point two is, a district-wide indicator look for. And then indicator seven point four is that we want our teachers to monitor the effects of instruction on individual and class learning. Those indicators are going to be district-wide across the entire system, so we'll have rich data from all buildings as they do classroom observations on that. And then each individual building, through the partnership with the Liberty Leadership Team and individual building data, will select two indicators that will serve as their look fours over the course of the year. And in the report, there's a couple links that take you to those pieces of data. If you want to see the individual building indicators that were selected for the 2122 school year, the link there will reveal that by building. It does reveal it by the numbering, four point one, two point two, et cetera. But in the manual, every indicator is listed, so if you're curious what two point two is, you can go and cross-check that with the manual and see exactly what that building is prioritizing as a look for. Other things in the, in the report there, I'll answer questions on all of them. Cindy made mention of the Team Liberty meeting. It's not included in the report because we talked about it in July and nothing has changed. Those dates have been presented to the board, and they will be finalized in our first meeting at the end of August. Any changes then, we'll update that so the board is aware of how those dates have changed. We do hit it hard and heavy, as Cindy mentioned, because the insurance timeline is very tight. We've got to have several meetings to decide on a recommendation to Dr. Tucker in time to the September board meeting, so that all of you have an opportunity to get a recommendation from him. You have a month to consider the, the implications of that recommendation, and then vote hopefully in October. That will allow us to have an open vote, which typically starts at the end of October. With that, I'll answer any questions that you have regarding the report of administration and human resources.
Dr. Vogelar, can you just explain what Team Liberty does and who comprises that team?
Yeah, I'd be glad to do that. So the, the big picture is that Dr. Tucker and, and the Board of Education needs to make very big weight decisions that affect compensation benefits and quality of work life for all of our employees. We don't want to make those decisions in a bubble, and so we lean on a team of people to help us explore the data, get a pulse on the implications of the recommendations as we're formulating them, hear from as many voices as we can, so that the recommendation that goes to Dr. Tucker really helps him to have the confidence that it's a very deeply vetted process surrounding that data. In the language or vernacular of how the state views it, we're a meet and confer district, and that means that we invite an opportunity to meet with employees and confer. That's different than a collective bargaining arrangement. So the group is really presented with all the facts together. We're one team, we're one voice, there isn't two sides of the table. We all want the, the greater good for the school system as a whole. So Team Liberty is made up by invitation, groups of teachers, groups from support staff positions, paraprofessionals, stewardesses, maintenance workers, bus drivers, et cetera. And as we wrestle through what kind of recommendation we would like to see Dr. Tucker forge and present to you, we, we invite all of these people to look into data and provide us insight from that. Many of them will go back and talk to their employees or counterparts. Many of them will talk to people who are not in job roles like them, but might be in the, in the same school building with them, and they'll have those conversations, and they come and bring that collective insight into the conversation. And then we have what's called a communication spreadsheet where we invite people to speak directly to Team Liberty to provide insight as well, just so that we're taking into account all of those things that might truly influence or should influence the ripple effect that these weighty decisions can have. So about as brief as I can get to the
That's good.
... the purpose of Team Liberty and how we come together to provide a recommendation to Dr. Tucker.
And we appreciate their work.
Other questions of Dr. Vogelar? Thank you. Last item then this evening under administration reports is 4.06, as far as the superintendent's report. As has been mentioned this evening by several of our cabinet members, our back-to-school meetings are off and running, as we have spread those out over the next several days. Keep in mind, this is in lieu of our typical face-to-face convocation. As much as we enjoy that event, we made the decision last spring to hit the pause button, not knowing exactly what the month of August would look like. We were certainly glad that we did, rather than having a large face-to-face gathering indoors. So consequently, we've shifted to having building-level and department-level meetings for our operations teams, face-to-face, where we're able to give them an update, award our years of service awards to those various recipients, but then also just be able to be available and accessible. Our entire cabinet travels with us to those meetings to be able to answer questions and just really connect with each of our campuses. So it's great to see our staff and our teachers back as they are walking through professional development and building-level retreats and gearing up for the start of the school year. Additionally, we held with our district leadership team retreat, a kind of a kickoff earlier this month, where we gathered at Liberty High School and walked through a variety of topics. In addition, we had our new teacher innovation institute, as has been shared, where about seventy-eight new teachers are joining the district, whether they're veterans or brand-new to the profession. So we want to welcome all of them and wish them all well as we start the school year. Epic started on, on August 10, with the rest of our schools starting up in a few days on August 24. Additionally, as it relates to our strategic plan work, we are meeting and convening with Scott Fuller, our consultant that's worked with us on strategic planning on August 26th and 27th, to be able to celebrate the accomplishments that have been made in effectuating the strategic plan even during the pandemic, but then also identify what are those areas that we want to consider bringing forward and incorporating into the strategic plan. It has been our aim the last several years to bring a revised strategic plan to the Board of Education for your review in and around October and November, so that will be our timeline as far as wanting to update our strategic plan and bring that information to you. It's also that time of year in which we start looking at our data, assessment data, so we've received some preliminary information that's not quite available to the public from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as it relates to map assessments as well as end-of-course exams, that then will inform our Liberty Public Schools scorecard. Given the pandemic, we've had a little bit of a shift in assessments where they've hit the pause button, but then now we brought them back, and so we know that that data will really serve as a baseline for the experience of the pandemic, and then how we build upon that in terms of making academic gains on behalf of all of our students. Another critical piece that's included in the report for this month's board meeting is return to learn survey information. We pushed the survey out to our staff and families about a week or so ago, and we closed that accumulation of results and feedback, and have provided some of that data for you, both in kind of a pictograph form, but then also some talking points or bullets as far as highlights from that survey document. We appreciate the help of the Innovation and Learning Department, as well as Mr. Anderson and the operations team, and really trying to inform our decision-making. That information will be shared with the public as well and be, be available to everyone to look at. The last thing that I wanted to share is really something that we've been involved in over the course of the summer, in and around the topic of critical race theory, and that being several inquiries that we have received from various organizations in and around keyword searches or the topic of critical race theory and the work going on in school districts, not just in Liberty Public Schools, but across the entire state. We've received inquiries from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Our teams have responded to that. We've received inquiries from other organizations like the Show Me Institute responded to those inquiries. Most recently, we received a pretty extensive inquiry from Missouri Prosper as far as records of information request. And the reason I mention that is that we're working with legal counsel along with other education associations and Missouri School Boards Association in responding to this fairly extensive request, and that it goes from board members, the board table, all the way to the classroom for those that are involved in, in creating lesson plans. And so it involves virtually every single staff person in our system. It also involves some keyword searches to the tune of about eighty keywords in requesting electronic documentation, video documentation, hard copy documentation. Reason I mention that is nearly every district in the state of Missouri, as our understanding, has received this request. Appreciate Sandra in working to turn around the response. And so our approach in being able to turn around that amount of information in a three-day period is not possible. Nonetheless, we've responded, and we've indicated our approach will be kind of a batching model. It's the old adage of how do you eat an elephant? You eat it one, one piece at a time or one bite at a time. So we're working through batching the request. We've already responded and indicated what that first batch would look like, how much it would cost, and are just waiting to hear back in terms of continuing to process that request. To give you an example, in one particular batch, and just working through board docs, our Board of Education platform, and how we hold our meetings and upload documentation that are, documentation that is available to the public. In walking through that, it took, we believe it would take about a hundred and twenty-two hours to be able to walk through each of those key searches in terms of terms, pull each of those documents and file them. At the rate of pay, of which we would look at kind of our average administrative expense, which is about $24.22 per hour, looking at about fifteen thousand pages as far as documentation, in total, that would bring that cost to about $4,515.84. That is just for one piece of the request. And so we'll, we sent that information earlier today, we'll wait to hear back from them, and then process that next piece. Every district is in that same position of trying to figure out how to navigate that extensive request, and so we'll work at it, like we said, one piece at a time in terms of, in terms of our responsiveness to that request. With that said, would certainly open it up to any questions that you all may have of me this evening. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
No questions, moving into section five, new business. 5.01, moving towards the approval of July 27, 2021 board meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I move the board to approve the July 27, 2021 board meeting minutes.
Sorry? Sandra, when you're ready.
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Epstein?
AJ?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Machine carries.
Into 5.02, the COVID leave resolution.
So you've heard extensively about our return to learn efforts as it relates to getting school back and running both, you know, face-to-face and virtual options. But one of the pieces that is critically important is how we support our staff and our personnel, and so I want to turn it over to Dr. Vogelar to walk us through this, this item this evening on our COVID leave resolution.
Thank you very much, Dr. Tucker. So the, this leave is, is really similar in some ways to the leave that we had through the FFCRA and through the extension of that that you all approved in January through the end of April, although it is limiting in terms of how that leave would be applied. And the logic there is, is obviously if, if someone is ill and doesn't come to work, the district provides a very, I think, a very strong message of support through paid time off to employees. Employees are given ten to twelve days per year, can accumulate up to a hundred or a hundred and two days, can be drawn, drawn down on when they need, as a form of income protection for employees. What makes COVID a little bit unique is that if somebody had strep throat or food poisoning, they would use PTO and be gone until they felt better, and they would return to work. With COVID, a COVID positive result, they would be out until they felt better, and then for an extended period of time so that the, the period of transmission of COVID is passed before they could come back. And that's a longer day, would, would drain, significantly drain PTO usage for employees. And so this resolution would create a form of PTO that we call COVID leave or CTO that an employee could draw upon if they test positive for COVID. So if they are not feeling well, they miss work, they'll use PTO just like they normally would. And, and if the, the, they get tested for COVID, it comes back as a positive test result, and they can communicate that to the district and have the PTO that they use put back in their bank and apply this COVID leave. It's up to ten days, so that's the basis of the resolution. It also ensures communication with the school system when there's a COVID positive. That communication helps us in terms of our mitigation and planning, and so this, this leave resolution would also allow for that. So that's the idea behind it. It's a leave that we would put in place for the entirety of the 2122 school year, with obviously provisions in there to modify it as this situation continues to develop, new information becomes available, and we need to course correct or, or make modifications, then there's flexibility in this document that allows that to happen as well.
We'll just present that to you this evening. We'll just present that to you this evening for your consideration.
Is there a cap on the number of days?
Yeah, it would be up to 10 days.
Okay. Thank you.
I move the board adopt the COVID-19 leave resolution. Second. Sandra, when you're ready.
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And into 5.03, the contracts and purchases.
We do have several items to present to you this evening. Mr. Anderson is going to walk us through the contracts and purchases on our board document.
Thank you. All of these are, were emergency actions under policy DJF-1. First item is a contract with Phoenix Renovation Restoration to handle some mold remediation at Kelly Brook Elementary. We also had a contract with Barkley Asphalt to help us with some repairs at Liberty North and DMS with some tripping hazards concerns. We had two separate contracts with Hales Mechanical to handle some rooftop units at Support Services, and those were two separate actions there. And then last, P1 Group to repair the HVAC system that happened. And again, all of those were kind of stuck up on us, emergency actions that you all will receive an update on Friday, pretty soon, since they occurred over the past couple weeks.
Mr. Anderson, the Phoenix one. I believe the Friday update led me to believe that it was caused by maintenance work that was being done. Was that internal, employees that were doing the work, that it wasn't done properly?
I think, you know, I have to have a brief visit. We've had a couple of these situations, and they're not uncommon, unfortunately, and it was just part of the cleaning process over the summer and then the cooling systems and sometimes being deactivated, and so we monitor for that. I guess I probably should also point out, we are, as a district, we're very aggressive in this space. We monitor very closely. It's just something that we have to deal with pretty regularly. But I would also stress that we have a longstanding working relationship with Children's Mercy Hospital, and we bring out their folks to do air quality testing on the front end and then the back end whenever these situations arise. So it may have been the result of our team doing their normal deep cleaning process over the summer, but then we bring in outside folks on the remediation side.
Okay, thanks. I move the board approve purchase of services from Phoenix Renovation Restoration, Inc., Barkley Asphalt, Hales Mechanical, and P1 Group.
Second. Sandra.
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Into section six, unfinished business, looking at board policy revisions.
Yeah, just the one item under unfinished business, and so you have several items that were uploaded, the first of which is policies for adoption, and that is policies JHCD and KLA. As you'll recall, this evening is the second read, as we were able to look at that information earlier this summer, back in July. The next set of information then are policies that are presented to you this evening for first read, and there are several there, and you'll see those as we come back for our meeting in September at our regular monthly meeting, so please let us know if you have questions, comments, things that we can look into with Missouri School Boards Association. And then the last set of items, there are three administrative procedures for your awareness, as you'll recall. We make you aware of those, and we just put them into our record or our file. Those are items that you don't necessarily have to act upon, and that is related to illness and injury response prevention as well as virtual courses. So we present those couple of policies for your approval consideration this evening.
I move the board adopt policies JHCD and KLA on second read.
Second. Sandra?
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And into section seven, the Board of Education, we typically look at Angie on 7.01, but I think anybody can speak on legislation slash advocacy.
I do have a couple of things. MSBA advocacy positions that will be voted on at the November MSBA conference. The advocacy positions are on the website. If you are curious about them, feel free, there's quite a few. However, if there are any that you feel need to have modifications, those need to be submitted by the first of September. So, you know, you've got, I think there's two weeks left in the month. Also, just a heads up, they're looking at some redistricting at the state level, which could or could not impact what is going on in the state. And I think that was it. Also, just to go back to the advocacy positions, they, those things steer what MSBA uses to advocate at both the federal and the state level, and so, and it deals directly with how education is perceived, funded, looked at, reviewed, all of those things. So that's kind of the ones that they look through it with. And so, you know, just kind of take a little gander if you need some bedtime reading, it's good for that, too.
Thank you, Angie. 7.02, board member remarks slash updates. I think it's always this time of year, I'm thankful for our work that administration does and obviously the building level and the teachers, support staff, everybody getting everything ready. I know everybody probably echoes that comment, so kudos to the work and looking forward to kicking off the remainder of the district here next week. Moving to 7.03, upcoming meetings. You'll all see the meetings coming up. The one that you'll note is highlighted in a burnt sienna, if you will.
Burnt sienna.
Is our January study session. Initially, as you all know, we typically put that on the first Tuesday of the month, and that's January 4, which just happens to be a working day, I believe. Is it a working day or an off day?
Non-working.
Non-working day. Non is critical in that note. So we're looking to move that, and as you think about it, the proposal would be to go to January 6, which would be a Thursday, a bit of a non-traditional day. So if you could take a look, if that works, great. If it doesn't, let us know, and we'll see if we can find another date that works for most of us. But January 6, look at your calendars, 7:00 AM, works out, awesome. If not, we'll find another date. And with that, we can move into section number eight. I move the board adjourned.
Second.
And Sandra, when you're ready.
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.